I would call this committee of the whole meeting to order July 25th. And all councils are present except for Council Noll, who is, will be here any minute. She's on her way. And Council Watson. I'm not sure if he'll be here soon. Does anybody have any calendar and communications? Nope. Would someone like to move the minutes?
I'd like to motion to move the minutes.
The motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Okay.
Slow down.
Mickey will phone the lines.
Anybody against this? All right. Seeing that all those, that passes seven to zero to zero. Is there any unfinished business? No? Because it's a new business, 2016-0244. Hi, Council Watson.
Evening.
Charter revision update. And I think we have the majority of the members of the Charter Revision Commission here. Thank you all for coming. And I think Bob Frink is the spokesperson. Yes, no? Dee, are you?
Little of both.
Okay, little of both. Would the other members like to come up or do you prefer to just stay where you are? Okay. So, floor is yours.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank the town council for pointing the numbers that they did. They gave us very strong members with good opinions and it was a pleasure to work with them. Secondly, I'd like to thank Bob because Bob was put with most of the Charter Revision workup. He looked up things for us. He got things going and for him, thank God, we're done. We are done. We're hoping to have, if it's all right with you, a public workshop opening on the 21st of July, I don't know, August.
August, yeah.
And that way we get, we want to know if you want the legal backup done beforehand. And if you, as a matter of fact, I'd like to call to Bob now to go over some of the high points.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Dee. And thank you for your leadership during the past 12, 15 months. I also want to thank Betsy McCauser and her assistant Nathan Tyrone, who assisted us throughout the process. We did, as Dee said, we did finish, pretty much finish up last night. Eighty-five or so votes from last June 6th to last night on chapters one through 11. Some we touched, some we didn't. So the document now is being, we're putting it together, our final report, and it will consist of one document. Chapter nine will be a complete rewrite and the rest of the chapters will be a markup. That's what we expect to deliver to you as our, as our draft report. I did give you, in front of you, you do have the highlights. I'll just briefly go over those. As you know, we're recommending to dissolve the RTM. Implement a seven-person Board of Finance. Enhance the annual budget development process with budget workshops. Implement an annual budget referendum, bifurcated budget, and you can, no minimum voter turnout and no limited number of referendums. We looked at the terms and both the Town Council and the Board of Finance will be four years staggered, elected at large, recommending that the TC stay at nine. Town Council and the Attorney, we're recommending the Towns Council hire the Attorney at will, so you can hire and fire at any time. Town Council issues annual report versus Town Manager today. Felt it would be more meaningful coming under your signature. Not saying Town Staff wouldn't be heavily involved in it, but anyway, that was our thoughts. Elected terms limited to three consecutive terms. That would be 12 years with a four-year term. Three consecutive, so you stand out for four years, you could come back in. Okay, so that's. Minority representation will apply to the Town Council and Board of Finance as per the Connecticut General statutes. That happens because of some special conditions. We have the RTM, and if we eliminate the RTM, then minority representation will apply. We did, we are recommending the employees of the Town and Board of Ed are restricted from serving on Town and elected bodies. On emergency appropriations, we raised the limit to $100,000 and not limit that to one per year as is currently. And I've listed here the duties of the Board of Finance, which is essentially to support your fiscal, financial decisions by providing research, data, and support on the budget development process. So, that's the highlights on the, on what we've done. Also, you have something I put together from the Connecticut General statutes is the schedules as I read them. And we owe you our final report, our draft report, by September 2. That's by a resolution you made last May, June. And we have to hold one public hearing, as Dee said, before then, so we'll do that sometime in August. You have 45 days after receiving it from us to hold a public hearing. Within 15 days after the public hearing, you provide comments back to us. If there are no recommendations from you, the, it's final and we're disbanded. If you do send back comments, we have 30 days to resolve them. And then you have 15 days to approve all or some of the, none of the recommendations, and then 15 months to send it to a referendum to voters. So, we are, we are essentially done. We've got to wrap it up, get it into one document, get it to you. Fairly heavy effort, and I think everyone, you know, learned. We had 11 members, four of which had no government experience. Four were prior RTM, one former Town Council, two former mayor. So, it was really a good mix, and as I've said, it's a really good reflection of the diversity of Groton. So, that's, that's that.
Well, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Dee. And open up to the council. If anybody has any questions. Rich?
Yeah, Bob, as you know, on the previous Town Council Charter Revision, we included changes to the definitions which caused, at that time, unknown to the people in the Charter Revision, it changed the voting rights of people that were non-residents. And I got the information from Betsy the other day and I responded to her. And I think that if we just changed the definitions back to the way they were, then we would go back to the days before 2009 where residents were allowed to vote.
Non-residents.
Non-residents were allowed to vote for referendum-type issues.
Yeah.
And I think that's a big issue. I mean, I, wherever I went in town, those people had come up to me and said, you know, we're non-residents, but we would still like to vote.
Yes, we've heard a lot of that. And we're looking to it.
You know, I know that, I know we have a report from the, from the Town Attorney, but I think that could have been biased. She could have been told to leave it like, like it is rather than to look into it and make changes because we were voting for, I don't know how many years, 30 years, non-residents were voting.
Yeah. Yeah, we did get an opinion on that, and our interpretation of that opinion was that they can't vote. But I guess, I think the answer to that is probably we need to have a sit-down with the Town Attorney face-to-face. So, you know, we sent him a written questions and you never get it exactly right. You know, you asked, you didn't ask the nth question to get, you know, the right answer or whatever. So, I'm going to suggest that we meet with the Town Attorney on our whole document.
And ask her, how did we, how, what was, how did we vote in the past? What rules were changed?
I can't talk about the past. You know, I know what we have today.
I mean, if we didn't do it in the past, I could see it, but we did.
Well, that's one of the questions.
And it was, and their chart, last Charter Revision didn't physically say, "We are taking this right away from the non-residents." It was done very underhanded, so to speak, by changing definitions.
Okay, well, thank you.
So, Council Barbara?
Did you want to say something about that before I speak?
I did.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Barbara.
My understanding is that this begins with Connecticut law. The Connecticut law allows a municipality to allow non-resident taxpayers, not simply non-residents, but non-resident taxpayers to vote in referenda. They may not vote for officials in the town, but they may vote in referenda, bonding referenda, et cetera. But it is up to the town. And again, without going into the history, and I don't have everything in front of me, my understanding is that the condition before the 2008 Charter was that the interpretation of that Charter, even if it wasn't explicit, was that it allowed non-resident taxpayers to vote in referenda. The Charter having been changed to some, in some manner, again, not maybe, not explicitly, the interpretation, the second interpretation was that there was a change sufficient to deprive the non-resident taxpayers of the right to vote. The way I would approach it is if we want to do something like that, we'd be explicit. Connecticut law allows us to do that. If we're going to allow non-resident taxpayers to vote in referenda, let's just be explicit and say, "Per Connecticut statute, we're allowed to do it and we're doing it." And just be done with it. Otherwise, you, you would leave the new Charter open to another future interpretation. Let's not leave any room for interpretation at all. I do have another question too, but go ahead, Damian. Sure.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank all of you for volunteering your time to do this. I know it was not fun. I know it was challenging. I know it was probably very frustrating. And volunteering your time for the good of Groton, and I really appreciate it. I know what it's like to volunteer your time and sometimes you just, sometimes feel like it's, it's overwhelming, and I really, really appreciate it. I do have a couple of small questions. One is, other towns doing this when it comes to hiring a Town Attorney at will. Now, that to me, as a non-attorney says, that we're not going to have one on the bankroll, on the books, and then when we need somebody, we're going to call somebody?
No. The way it reads is you'll hire one, and that will be the Town Attorney until the next one is hired.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah, it follow, I think Glastonbury. We follow a lot of Glastonbury stuff. It's kind of a joke, we're becoming Grotonberry.
So, if we, so if we hire an attorney, what you're saying is we, we're not, we don't have to keep them for X amount of time?
When you feel that Town Attorney is no longer serving your needs, you can hire another one.
Okay. My second one is, how many towns have a Board of Finance and a Town Council as opposed to the way we do it?
Twenty or 30. If you say Town Council, maybe 20. There's 120 in Connecticut that have a Board of Finance, but not all of them have a Town Council.
And what do they have?
Well, they have, some have RTMs. There are five that have RTMs. There are six towns in Connecticut that have RTMs have them.
Okay.
And they have Board of Selectment, kind of government.
Okay. I've been trying to follow you guys as close as possible. Unfortunately, not getting to many of your meetings. And my opinion is this. You've all worked very, very hard. You come from different backgrounds. I know you, you had many votes, 85 votes, and many difference of opinions. My opinion is you work so hard that I think it's only fair that all these go to the residents. And the residents decide whether they want to go with these changes or not. I will not block anything that you are coming to me because I do believe it's the residents' vote. Thank you very much. Nice job.
Dean, did you want to add something?
Yeah.
And Bonnie?
Thank you. I had a list. I should bring these things with me, right? But I had a list of things that I wanted the, because you had nothing else to do, right? A list of things that I wanted addressed. One that I could think of offhand was, some towns appoint their Town Clerk, others allow them to be elected. We allow ours to be elected. I think maybe we always have. I can't go back to the Avery days, but was that discussed at all?
It was addressed. We voted first in favor to have the Town Clerk appointed, and that was overturned at the next meeting, so.
Okay.
We're the status quo on that.
Okay.
We fell very strongly on the, however the vote goes, the others will, the others who voted against it would support what we did and go ahead with that.
Okay. The other question I had is on the, an annual budget referendum. This would be a budget referendum under any circumstances, right? It wouldn't be triggered by proposed tax increases over a certain level?
No trigger.
Okay. So, an annual budget referendum. My concern with the June 30th figure is if no approved budget by June 30th, previous year's budget is adopted. I'm thinking about the Finance Office, the Tax Collector. Is there enough room in here for them to say, "Well, we know by July 1st now what the budget's going to be, let's quickly..." In other words, how would we do, how would we handle setting the mill rate?
I met with Cindy Landry, the Town Manager, yesterday. She came up with that. She looked at our timelines, and when we issue our draft report, she's going to mark it up with what her idea of the timeline should be, and we'll, we'll look at that. And quite honestly, we tried to get with Cindy, I think since March, and she's just been booked up flat.
Right.
With the budget stuff, and just couldn't do it. So, so she has, she will provide input on the, on the timeline, so it's doable. We're not, we don't want to propose something that's not doable.
Right, right. Just stood out. One more question having to do with the, with the election of the Town Council. Town Council and the Board of Finance, elected terms limited to three consecutive terms. What was, we have, we do have, we don't have a Board of Finance, but we do have a Town Council, we have an RTM as well, and a, and a Board of Education. And you probably left those out because state statute very heavily governs the Board of Ed. But there are some long-serving members, a few long-serving members. I mean, Harry's a standout example here, somebody who served for a very, very long time. But what was the impetus behind adopting or recommending that terms be limited, seeing as almost all of our officials, except for a small handful, almost all of our officials or positions anyway, see a turnover within reasonable periods of time?
Yeah, I guess I feel like, and I can't speak for everyone, but I think I feel like the turnover was healthy.
Right. Did you think that, did you feel that we were not having enough turnover or you simply wanted to codify it?
I think we wanted to codify it.
Okay. One, one small thing. Minority representation. I know that there's a, there's a little statute kind of written for us. It doesn't say Groton, but it's sort of written for us. It does depend on having the RTM there.
Right.
So, you're recommending that minority representation apply because there really is no choice? Not having an RTM would then bring us in line with everybody else?
We'd have to. The way I read it, to be in line with the Connecticut General statutes, if we eliminate the RTM, we would have to then involve, employ minority representation.
So, it's not the kind of thing where you thought of it as desirable or undesirable, simply it's an automatic event as soon as you get with the RTM?
This applies to our subdivisions and...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, Bonnie, and then Greg, and then Karen.
I want to thank you all very much for doing this. This is a lot of work and appreciate it. I had a question, I know, and apologize for being late. The emergency appropriation limit, what was it?
I think it was 50.
And, and was it limited to one per year?
One per year, yeah.
And so, your thought on changing this was if we had some emergency?
Well, I don't know how you could plan on one emergency per year. That would be nice if we could be sure of that, you know. I mean, it's, it's a choice you can make. It's up to you to employ that, that appropriation method, you know, it's, it's...
And, okay. And then, if we send this to, to referendum, was there discussion on whether it's going to be each item? Have you talked about how you're going to vote on it?
Yeah, I think about that, how the questions are laid out, is right. We'd have to think about that and lay them out properly. Quite honestly, that wouldn't be our job. We'd be dissolved. Once you accept our report, we're done.
We'd have to figure that out.
So, you want to structure the questions so that you didn't conflict with things. If you eliminated something, you know, just, if you, you know what I mean?
And, and election is November 7th, and I would really, really like to get this done before the election. Is that going to be possible?
Yes, because we can go to the public hearing on August 21st and then carry on from there.
Can we move it up?
Well, we...
The public hearing?
Well, I, yeah. I don't know what the timeline is to get this on a ballot. I've heard, I've heard September 1 or 2 has to be, I don't know what the rules are. The Town Clerk would know that. But if you want to tell us...
I'd like to, I mean, we called for it. I'd like this council to vote for it, to, you know, get it on.
We're definitely going to get it, get it to you in August.
Okay.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone too. I know it's a ton of work to, the past 15 months for everybody to sit down and go over all these items. I think it will be a challenge to get this, get through this, to get it on the November ballot, but I guess we'll just have to wait and see. I had one, a couple of questions around the budget referendum. Just the thoughts on, I know we discussed a trigger to have a budget referendum, and it looks like you're implementing, recommending a budget referendum without a trigger.
Correct.
With no minimum voter turnout. Just what were your thoughts and considerations?
Well, we, that was born from the, the notion of an unfettered, that's the gentleman back here, Dan, who made the motion on that, and what do we call it, unfettered. If you think of it in terms of referendums, you think of one or two or how many and stuff like that. What I think we thought of is that we wanted the voters to have the final say on the budget. Okay? Not two shots at the final say or three shots, but the voters have the final say on the budget. So, that's why it's structured the way it is. That's my opinion of our decision, okay? No minimum voter turnout, right. And other communities do that. Guilford, I don't know about the minimum voter turnout, but the, you vote till it wins. Guilford, Madison, Clinton, Stonington, and Newtown, Connecticut, all do that, and they seem to survive. And, you know, the big myth of referendums is that it's a big no-vote time, and that's not true. The majority of the time, people vote yes. It passes on the first, first vote. It's rare that it goes more than two times. It does. They do, but it's rare.
Any idea what the voter turnout in those communities is?
20% teens, under 10. It varies, all over the place. Yeah.
Karen?
Yes. I want to thank all of you. I know this was a Herculean task, and we really appreciate the time and effort that you've put into it. I was at one or two of your meetings, and thank God, it was you and not me because it was a huge job you were doing. I have a question on the staggered terms for the Town Council and just in how you envisioned we could get to that. Right now, all of our terms end at the same time. So, how do you, how does, how do you make the transition to staggering?
So, in the election in Jan, in, in November 2019, you elect, I think it's four people for two years and five people for four years.
Okay.
And you start the staggering in 2019.
Okay.
Same thing with the Board of Finance.
Karen?
Yeah, I think this will be the fourth Charter Revision Commission that I've seen since I've been here. Two failed and one passed. And this is good because I get to go last and only have a couple of questions. All my questions have been asked pretty much so far. Did you consider stipends for elected officials?
No. But I did consider a reward system of some kind. I don't think I brought up at the meetings, but, no, we didn't.
No, I can't.
Well, I can't say that. I think it might have been discussed at one or two, it might have been discussed. There was never a motion made that I can recall.
Yeah, and that's, that's always been a no-no. Remember when we voted ourselves a 19% raise?
18% raise, they all came in and complained about it, yeah.
That was back in the 90s. Just seems like we just appointed you yesterday and you're all, you're coming to us. I know you've worked really hard. I've read minutes. I haven't, I haven't, I don't think I've been to any of your meetings. I know how much volunteer it takes away from your family life and everything. Everybody, thank you so much for working so hard. That's it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
That'll, my questions have been completely answered, actually, so I just want to say thank you.
Bonnie?
I have one question. So, for the staggered terms, it would be like what we do with Board of Ed now? You actually, like, when we have our nominations, you just put somebody in a two-year slot or somebody in a four-year slot?
I don't think so. The, when, Steve, you could start off with four that'll have a two-year term and five that'll have a four-year term. So, the next election, there'll be, what, four? You'll elect four more, I guess, because you've got five in for four. So, it's five and four, five and four. So, you always, no, it's always a four-year term.
But to get there, we're going to have to...
No, you start off with, with the first election, four people will only be for two years.
But that's what I'm asking. Do they have to run for the two-year term?
Yeah. Well, I guess, yeah, yeah.
So, we'd have to figure out who gets to run for two or who gets to run for four.
Right. That's the first time, yeah.
Dean?
Four isn't necessarily an attractive term for some people, especially people who have done it before. And maybe why it's a problem getting people to run for Board of Ed, they go four years of, of that. Maybe that's where the stipends come in, and sort of juice it up a little bit. "All right, fine, I'll run if I get, if I get a grand a year or something." The thing about the schedule, though, is this. I know we set up the Charter Revision Commission, but by definition, it was completely open-ended. The fact that we started, it doesn't mean that we necessarily endorse everything that they've done. They've worked on it for 15 months. I congratulate you for the work. I know what it's like to try to, you know, work with a code and modify it and rewrite it, probably some parts from scratch. I would like to give myself the time that the, that the law requires to get this thing done right. They've, like I said, they've had 15 months to work on it. I'd like, whatever it is that the law gives us, to have the public hearing, to think about it, to talk to our lawyers, and just make sure. There are some major changes in here. And if it wasn't for that, I'm happy to throw it to the voters in November. It's just, I'm not certain that we, this being the end of July already, that, you know, we have the time.
Rich?
Yeah, excuse me, Bob. Chapter nine, can you refer my memory? What's that one about? That's going to be on...
Budget Finance. Budget and Finance. That's the budget, yeah. Budget Finance.
What else? Well, I too would like to thank everybody for your work, and I think we appreciate, I think Bob and Dee, you guys recognizing that we did try to get a diverse group of people on, on the, on the commission. You know, there were, I think, like you said, four people who didn't hold public office at all, and several who had very strong opinions about certain things, and we tried to balance that out. I'm somewhat curious, you know, we live in New England, and in New England, people don't like change. And, and there's a lot of change in the, what you guys are putting forth. And I'm wondering if there was any discussion at all about the amount of change that is going into the Charter Revision and how, how it will affect the voters. My, my concern is, is that there's a little bit of something for everybody to like and to dislike, and by putting all that in there, you run the risk of, of, of having a lot of people not like the change. So, where, you know, as an example, where you don't have a trigger for the referendum. You know, some people might, that's, that's an extreme to, to one, to no referendum and to having a trigger on it. And I'm wondering if, if you could talk to that a little bit, if anybody had any opinion on, you know, what, if what you guys think is being put forth. I think the, you know, the one that Rich worked on, there were cosmetic changes, right? If I recall correctly. Rich? There were, there were cosmetic changes on your, there wasn't anything, you know, there wasn't, there was no meat, you know what I'm saying? There was, there was just, you know, this changed here and will it, but I'm just wondering if you...
There's no doubt this is a heavy lift.
Yeah.
Okay. But I, I, I believe in it. I, I didn't come in thinking of all this. I, I had my mind changed on a lot of things. When you look at the other towns that have referendums, they are not scary things. They're not, they're votes. They turn out to be votes of confidence for you folks and for our professional staff. Many budgets, Stonington's budget has passed on the first round for the last five years at least. People care about their communities, and they do want to have a say in the spending today. We've got people who are fixed income, who are making choices between, you know, prescription drugs, and preventative medical care, and heating oil, and, you know, you know, you know the deal, and they want to have a say. The word, that's the background I got.
Yeah.
These kind of referendums do work. It can bring the community together. We plan these budget workshops in the beginning, put a lot of energy into developing the budget in the first place around the community's needs. So, we don't get at the back end and bicker over, what are we doing, and why are we doing it? We've figured, kind of figured it out in the front end. This will give us, you know, I thought this would put us more in line with our peers, but this will give us peers.
Yeah. Well, I don't think there's, I mean, maybe you can answer to this, but I don't, the people who do go to referendum in those communities, what's the ones that's closest to our population? Like, what, if we're forty thousand?
Probably Newtown has, you can talk about population, or you can talk about registered voters. Newtown's registered voters is actually a little bit more than ours. It depends, you know, these things change year to year. But they have seventeen, they have seventeen thousand registered voters, we now, I think, have eighteen right now.
And what's Newtown's total population?
I think it's less than ours.
Yeah.
They had a problem with the husbands of, that work out of town, not voting. That was, but...
It's interesting that you say it's not about the population, it's about the registered voters, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure either way, it just, it sounds, you know, I'm not sure, I don't know.
Well, you know, when you talk about our population, you know, we always bring in the Navy. Okay? So if you take that out, we're probably in line with Guilford, Madison, closer to them.
But, but as a fact, there's no town that has a population of forty thousand, city or town, that goes to referendum for their budget?
I don't, I don't know, I've been fighting, I could look, I...
What's population of Glastonbury?
Thirty, I don't know, thirty-some, thirty-five?
It's fine, I'm not here nor there, well, it is here or there, but I'm not sure it's, the, I'm just, again, I'll go back to my concern, is that I'm worried that there's so, you guys did a lot of heavy lifting, and there's a lot of changes. And so, you know, it's going from zero to sixty in, you know, seven seconds. So, I think I'll recognize Dan and Jane, who are...
I was one of the more vocal members in terms of a referendum. Jane, you want to come up to?
Just so people can hear you.
I was one of the more vocal members when it came to having a referendum with no conditions, and I took the position that, in town, and I've heard this from people, when I go out about a referendum, wanting a referendum, in a town that probably will not experience another charter revision for another ten years, I felt it was time to move forward. There's only six towns in Connecticut that have an RTM, and the RTM does represent the community, but how many members are on the RTM? As opposed to how many voters you have in the community? If you're looking for representative government, I think the people need to have a say in where their tax dollars are going. So I really support that philosophy. I think New England, you mentioned New England, reluctance to change. This is too radical, we're doing too much, Board of Finance, referendum, eliminating their RTM. But I believe it's progress, if you look throughout Connecticut, these things are taking place. And I just think it's time that Groton makes that transition. And I, you know, we had many debates about this, in terms of whether we should put, you know, a two-and-a-half percent, you know, cap there for the referendum or not. And the bottom line is, I believe that there's a small number of people that are making all those decisions, sort of people of Groton now, have some faith in the people to make those decisions. And just held to that decision.
Yeah, I want to just point out, I'm not, I'm not saying I don't support what you're saying, I'm just saying that we're in New England, and people change, so when you, when the commission is looking at making, you know, let's say it's twenty changes, you know, what the level of those changes are, and how people accept it, as opposed to, you know, trying to find the, maybe you did find the ones that are the most important, you felt that really moved the town forward, and were right, were best for the town. I'm just, again, it's not, I'm not putting my opinion into it, I'm just trying to sell the larger point of, a lot, a lot going into it. Jane, did you want to?
Yes, a couple of things. First of all, I want to just confirm what you said, there are no towns in Connecticut of our size that have a referendum. And point out that there was a tremendous difference of views on the commission. Three or four members don't support a referendum at all. And there is, and we went around and around about the triggers and turnout requirements. And the votes changed week by week, depending on who was there and who was absent. So, I just want to make sure you understand, it's not, you know, a monolithic group on this issue, and there's a lot of room for disagreement. There's an, is an awful lot new in the proposal, and it would be a shame to lose all of it, because somebody didn't like a piece. I'm hoping that you separate the questions.
Oh, that's my question, that's my, that's my next question, sorry.
In order to minimize that. And there are a number of ways you can do that. One question might be, do you support doing away with the RTM in favor of a Board of Finance? Another question might be on the referendum. And then there could be a third question for everything else.
Okay.
But, that discussion is totally up to you. I think that the way the referendum is structured, there'll be a lot of opposition to it, and we did have that conversation a number of times in the meeting, meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Dean? And then Karen?
I hope you'll understand, I play devil's advocate on a lot of things. The critique that I've heard for years, I mean, the grass is always greener on the other side, every town likes what the other town's doing, it seems. The critique I've heard directed at referendum, much of referendum, is when the voters say no, which they do do sometimes, when the voters say no, there's very little in the no for the officials to be able to divine why there was the no, unless it was an identifiable hot-button issue that year. The voters said no, so the officials are left to guess as they retool, you know, fool around with the budget. Now, Bob, you had said, based on what you found, that by and large, voters will vote yes. So the specter of constant re-referendum, getting close to June thirtieth and all of that, and finally having maybe twenty-five people show up, because everybody else is tired of coming out, and all that usual critique, that that really isn't the everyday reality of a budget referendum, an annual budget referendum, that by and large, people will vote yes for the budget. Is that because you believe that the officials, Board of Finance and the Town Council in this case, and the Town Manager as well, knowing that there'll be a budget referendum, and knowing, feeling some pressure to make sure there's only one referendum, and that it's a success, will see to it ahead of time, basically divining the other way, see to it ahead of time, that this will be an acceptable budget for the public, not simply, quote, their favorite budget, that the public will do whatever it wants. Do you see having the budget referendum as an incentive for the officials to do something different than what they're doing now, for example? So that it's guaranteed yes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's what you're hoping for. Now, do you, do you know whether the officials in these municipalities that have the budget referendum, whether they, to what, I mean, we do this, when we meet now, we guess, the Board of Education, Town Council, the RTM, we take our best crack at it, but we don't really have to answer to a referendum in the end. Do you find that people, knowing that there's a referendum coming, when the officials are all done with it, that they act differently?
Who acts differently?
That the officials act differently with respect to formulating a budget, when they know that there's a budget referendum coming.
I would think so, yes. I would hope so. I, yeah, yeah. I mean, here's Stonington this year. Stonington wrote his approved 2018 budget. East Lime, they approved the budget. So, that's the norm, what I've seen. And there are years when it doesn't happen.
Bob, what was the tax increase for Stonington and for East Lime?
Pardon?
What was the increase? What was the budget increase for?
For Stonington, point-six-seven mil tax rate increase. Ten percent of the towns, thirteen thousand voters, ten percent voted. Now, you could talk, if you wanted to talk to the first selectman over there, how do they do it? I mean, that's what I would suggest. How, you know, the first selectman of Guilford, or Madison, how do you, how do you get a budget through the first time? I mean, it's a learning experience.
Yeah. Because I know it doesn't always happen. I remember Stonington not being able to pass it the first time.
Karen?
I have two comments. I would think, first of all, it's incumbent on the council to pass a budget that we feel is acceptable to the taxpayers. I mean, I think that should be a given. So, I would think that that would be, I would look at a referendum as being an incentive, and a good thing, to make sure that we do the absolute best that we can do for the taxpayers. Secondly, I know that what's being proposed is a lot of change, but I look at it that we are simply responding to what we heard from the voters in the last election, which is, we are not happy that we don't have a say in our, but in what we're spending, how it's being spent. We're not happy about the tax increases we want to say. So, I don't see this as a lot to, I don't, I'm not necessarily that concerned about it not being passed, because I think in many respects, we are giving people exactly what they ask for, which is why we convened a Charter Revision Commission to begin with, so...
Thank you. Bonnie?
I have a question, and then I have the comments. So, they're gonna do two different budget referendums, one for the town budget, and one for the Board of Ed?
Yeah, one, one vote a day, I mean, but, yeah, it's a bifurcated budget, they call that.
And then, did you talk about the minimum budget requirement for the Board of Ed votes?
No. But other towns do bifurcated budgets, so it's gotta be a...
But you stop to comply with the MBR.
Mechanically, I don't know how that works, but other communities do it.
And then, I agree with Karen. I'm excited, we have a new Town Manager, these are great things, this would be so fabulous, and I think the towns would vote for it.
Thanks, Bonnie, Dan?
Sorry. So now that I've been listening, I do have a couple more questions. So, we're talking about, and this all kind of correlates, but I still haven't quite heard the direct question and the answer, so, and it's a couple of questions together, but in relation to this due date, the June third due date, I want to know if there was any discussion about changing the date, so that it correlates a little bit more in line with the state approving their budget, part one. The second question, the reason why I'm asking, is because I think that would have a huge influence on us separating out the Board of Education to the town. So are your voters voting on just the expenditures? Because now that you're separating them out, it's very possible that the Board of Education could be bringing in a lot more revenue than, say, the town, or vice versa, to their expenditures. So, when you say that you're gonna split them out, and you're gonna have them vote separately, it's not really clear to me, what are they actually voting on? Is it just expenditures, or...
They're voting on your recommended budget.
What's that?
They're gonna vote on, the Town Council's recommended budget includes town, Board of Ed, and subs. That's your recommended budget.
But it, but you're including...
And it's broken out by town and Board of Ed. Okay, so, so it's a separate vote. I vote on yes or no on the town budget, which includes the subs, I guess, and yes or no on the Board of Ed budget.
Right, but I guess where it gets cloudy for me is, the expended, like, what we bring in as revenue is...
Right, right. So then there's a revenue shortfall, you're saying?
Influences, yeah, because, look at what we just went through.
Right.
Like, that would be, that would be a, this is a perfect example of, if you put this past budget out to the voters, I, explain to me how they would have voted on that. And I, I guess I'm just trying to make it a real situation, because...
We do have a paragraph in there on reducing an approved budget. Okay? So, the voters approve a budget in May, and in September, October, the state revenue falls drastically. And you either have to raise taxes, borrow money, or, or...
Cut spending?
Cut, cut, cut spending, or all the above. Okay? So we did put some mechanisms in there for those three things, after the budget's approved. But as far as we know, as far as I know, Jamie agreed, that the fiscal year is June, July one to June thirtieth, and that's by law. We had, you know, we had, nothing we could do about that.
Okay, I, I get, I'm still that whole, only because all, most of us sitting in this room have looked at every single page of our budget, like, we are very educated people in this room, trying to get the uneducated, who don't look at every page of our budget, to understand what they're voting on. And I feel like sometimes, that part of our community is lost. And I always said, anytime you want to make sure that who's voting on what they're voting are, are educated voters, and they're, and I guess I just want to make sure, if we make a strong change like this, that it's very clear as to what people are gonna be voting on. And me, personally, sitting here, looking at the way this is set up, I don't see it being successful, to where you can educate somebody outside of the expenditures, putting in what the revenue is, and making it a split vote between the Board of Education and the town.
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta look at the whole budget process, and it starts off with the Board of Finance sending out its budget schedule to the public. So the public knows when things are gonna happen, when they can chime in, when they can be involved, when the decisions are made. Then the Board of Finance creates, provides a five-year forecast to these budget workshops. So while you're in there with the Public Works, for instance, we've got a five-year forecast of figuring the revenue and expenses, you know, we know what pay, salary, wages, and benefits are, those sorts of things. So, the stakeholders would come into the workshops, public's invited, okay, into those, and then they would, they would end up giving that results of the workshops to you, you would then provide guidance, budget guidance, to the Town Manager. It would include a hard number, you know, two percent increase, or something like that. So, they are gonna create a budget based on the wants and needs the community has talked about, and been involved in deciding. And then, it comes out, the budget comes out of the different, the town, the Board of Ed, and the subs, and the Board of Finance reviews it. First of all, to see, was the guidance followed? If not, what do we have to do? What are some recommended cuts to get back to guidance? And then they pass it on to you, and you make the final decision of what this town needs and doesn't need. And that's your recommended budget that goes to the referendum. And there's a lot of communication all the way, you're right. All of that has to be communicated to the public as best we can, realizing it's not a perfect world, and many, all communities, and many communities I talk to have this problem, people, you know, that are not always paying attention, but it is a communications challenge, and we'll have to find ways to deal with that.
Greg, Diane, and then Harry.
I think my questions have been answered.
All right, Diane? Thanks.
So, the people that want to be informed will be informed. There's gonna be plenty of chances for them to be informed. That's the bottom line.
We're gonna make recommendations on how to do that.
And I have to reiterate what Karen said, that I understand that some people do not like change, I understand that. But, when I was knocking door to door last, two years ago, running for Town Council, the one thing that I kept hearing was, they want a say in the budget. I kept hearing it over and over again, that they want to have some type of hand in how their money is being spent. So, I know it's gonna be a long task, but I, I think it's, time has come. Thank you.
Karen?
Okay, so, so there's a, there's a budget that goes to the Board of Finance, and then goes to the council, that's the path you're talking about. Right now, I'll take the subdivisions, for instance, and the Board of Education, but the subdivision in particular, they submit a budget now to the Town Manager, and it's a pass-through, he doesn't say anything about it, and then it comes to the Town Council.
Well, it'll go to the Board of Finance first.
And the Board of Finance would have a say before it came to the council?
They would look it over and make recommendations to you, as to, this is, this, you know, we need to balance things off, take some, this much from the Board of Ed, take this much from the town, whatever, you know, they would give you recommendations on getting back to guidance, okay?
And then, one thing that kind of comes to mind, I'm sure you've thought of everything, it's been fifteen months doing this, and I'm probably saying something that you all talked about, but, so, it has the potential to divide the town even more, if you have a board, a referendum. Let's say the Board of Finance, it doesn't matter what they do, I mean, let's say the, I'll pick a hot topic, the police funding for the city. Let's say the Board of Finance says, well, we'll pass on to the council what they're asking for. And the council looks at it and says, no, we're gonna zero it out. So now... zero it out. So now, you're in a situation where you're going to have a referendum, and all the people on one side of town might vote a certain way, and all the people on the other side of town might vote a different way. You know, it's just, and, and I, that, that's what you're setting up. Well, that's, that, it has the potential to do that. And I just, a concern of mine, I'm just kind of talking and thinking out loud.
It's kind of a hypothetical, I mean, it's kind of a hypothetical, zero it out.
Well, it could be the same thing if you, you know, if, if you cut the library out. You know what I mean, is?
I, I think I get back to what Dean said, is, one of the motivations of a budget referendum is that you're going to hopefully create a budget that will make it on the first vote. And we're not going to zero things unless you think it'll make it on the first vote. You know, that's, that's part of your calculation.
Harry, you have a say?
Yeah, I, I, I am, I'm skeptical about it, but that's...
Yeah.
Dean, and then Rich.
I think a referendum might be an interesting approach. I kind of like referendum. I would have preferred myself something like a, a trigger, but I'd be curious to see how it would, how it would work. And I want to remind people of something H.L. Mencken once said, I don't know if you know if this is coming, and it has to be attributed correctly. He said something like, "Democracy is the theory that the common people know what they want and deserve to get it good and hard." So keep that in mind.
I remember that. Keep that in mind.
Rich?
Yeah, Bob, if the referendum fails, does it go back to the town council?
Yes.
And then?
You get with the, with the town manager, work out things with him. You get with the superintendent of schools, work out things with them. The subs, work out things with them. Come up with the next budget.
And we're finished with the Finance Committee at that point?
They would be advising you. I mean, you would want to lean on them, I would think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, and you probably don't have this answer, but if you do, that's great. Do we actually know how, what percentage of non-resident taxpayers are in this town?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred?
I've heard 2,000. It's, it's a lot.
Okay, so my biggest concern at this point, then, is I, I truly believed that this is something that really, wholeheartedly, they should be involved, especially with a referendum. Especially if they are a huge portion of paying into this. They, they need a voice just as much as every other person that lives in this town. So I truly believe that that is one thing that we need to go back and revisit in relationship to a referendum. They are no different than the people who live here every single day. They still pay taxes as if they did. I, I really think that that should be reconsidered.
I just think we got to get a yes or no from the legal people on it. You know, we've, we've got, go ahead.
Good, Bonnie?
I completely disagree. I own a second home over in Long Island. I don't get to vote on anything over there. Not a resident. And it's not cheap, though.
Jane?
I'm not an attorney, as you all know, but the way I understood our legal opinion, which we should ask that it be forwarded to you, that seemed a catch.
It was.
Speaking to Mike, please.
Yes. It's my understanding of this legal opinion that if you have a town meeting, you can, as a legislative body, designate non-resident taxpayers as eligible to vote in that town meeting. And for us, our RTM was considered a town meeting. And so, the opinion that we got is that without an RTM and a town meeting, we're not able to convey that right to non-resident taxpayers. But please read it and see if you understand it differently. Also, the language that's used in most places is that people that own residences or property that's valued over $1,000 can vote, where, where they do have the ability to vote, because there's a town meeting. And does that include votes? What kind of property does that include? And so, it's a US citizen who owns property valued at over $1,000. A trust is not a US citizen. An LLC is not a US citizen. So there's a whole, very murky area. I don't think we want to have everyone who keeps a boat here voting.
Well, it's personal property, right? Isn't a boat personal property?
It's personal property, valued over $1,000.
Assess the vote, yeah.
Yeah.
Rich?
Yeah, I believe that issue came up a number of years ago in Stanford, where lots of people had sailboats, and they lived all over. And that's why the issue came up and it was changed, that it was, that they said that if you owned a sailboat or the $1,000, you couldn't vote. Yeah, there's something on the books on that. But in our case, we, we're talking about property owners, not sailboats, or cars, or what have you.
Harry?
Yeah, I don't think it's sailboats. It used to be at one point. I own a boat. My boat is taxed according, my, my registration is my tax according to the value of the boat and the length. And that comes to the state. And cars, you have to live here to have a car. But I guess I would, I would wonder if, you know, somebody owned a tract of land, a few acres, and, and six sisters owned it, do all six of them vote in our referendum? I just, I don't know the answer to that question, but they got me thinking about that also. Thank you.
Thank you.
So when moving it forward, when you guys have the public hearing on the 21st, there'll be a report that people will be able to read, that will give some background to each item that was changed or not changed. So will there be, you know, some wording about the pros and the cons, and how you kind of got to where you got, so that, I think that would be very helpful to, to...
I don't know about that. I think there'd be maybe copies of the minutes we could make available, to put that together with 11 of us agreeing to something like that.
Yeah.
Hmm hmm hmm.
Well, I'm wondering...
You know, we've, we've done the best we can.
Well, I just, I'm just concerned, I think that, I think that we see...
Pardon?
You know, I think that we see things that we do just here in council, or that happen in town, you get to a point and you want to be trusted to get to that point. And there's not a lot of that at times. You know, people want to, they want to, like, as an example, the questions that we're asking, and you have an answer to it. But everybody in town who's going to read it is going to have a question, saying, well, why didn't you go with the, you know, the, the trigger? And, and, you know, Daniel come up and say, you know what I mean? Like, there needs to be some explanation.
Perhaps on that, yeah.
You know, there, if there is, I think on some of the bigger points, you're better off putting some of that stuff together in a report, because, you know, the, and then actually, what, what ends up going out to the taxpayers in the printed referendum, when we get to that, is very important as well, to, so that you, because an educated voter is what we want. And so, you know, they need to, you know, there, there may be people who are, who may be adamantly against, you know...
Yeah.
Whatever it is, and having, and having the information will help. I just have a question, I think it will help me. Can you talk a little bit to how the, like, walk me through the town clerk? So you, you voted, what was the vote to have the town clerk appointed? What was that vote?
Five to four, I think.
Five to four?
Yeah.
Out of 11 people, right? There's 11?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then somebody on the prevailing side brought it up. And then what was the vote on the...
Five to four, I don't remember the vote, but...
It was eight to one. Just me.
Okay, yeah. Is it?
Jennifer.
Jennifer.
I know originally, it was at the end of the evening, when we took that vote, and not, all of us were competing on the differences between, like, an appointed and elected, what's the benefits. And I know for one that I abstained originally from the original vote. So it was two weeks since the next meeting, and everyone did their due diligence, and then we took a new vote. And then that's how we came up with going back to the original.
Okay. And Bob, how many votes changed over the course of the 85? How, how many were reversed?
I think that's the only one. I don't know. Somebody correct me. I can't remember another one. There wasn't many.
Bob had said there were like 85 votes. How many of them were reversed? How many?
I, I, a few of them.
Oh, I think many.
Okay.
Not many, but on the issue of the referendum, we would vote to have a trigger one week, or we'd vote for a turnout of 15%. And then next week, revisit it, and there'd be no turnout.
Jennifer, did you want to?
Yeah, in regard, going back to the referendum and overall.
Do you want to come up, so you can be heard on the mic?
Yeah, cool.
Here, sit here. As Jane had mentioned, in regard to the referendum, there was many discussion points regarding that. But what I wanted to, regardless of where we end up with the referendum, and I know how it was stated, that we could have multiple questions when it came time to bring this up to the voter. But what I wanted to avoid, and I wanted the council to consider, is that you look at our recommendation as a whole, whether we had some disagreements or prevailing sides versus non-pervailing sides, for one reason. And this is a prime example. If the voters decided not to terminate the RTM, but then add a referendum, we've just added an extra form or layer of government to grant, which we can't afford. So as you're looking through our recommendations, just please take in mind that there are some of the things that, we put certain key stop, key things in place, so that we can make a more efficient government, or at least our view from a charter perspective.
Greg?
You mentioned that you had 85 votes. So there must have been some topics that didn't make the list, like, didn't get voted. You discussed certain things, but they're not on the sheet, either yes or no, or... It might be interesting to see some of the things that you may be considered and didn't go anywhere. Is that, is that an easy?
Uh, yeah, you want to, it's just a meeting minutes on that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, a lot of things didn't make it. Yeah, yeah, I...
Why would that be helpful?
Um, just because, I mean, we, we have a chance to ask you to go look at certain things again, I guess. Is that part of the process, I think?
Jennifer, and then Jane?
I mean, some of the things that, I mean, it is 85 votes, but some of them, we were looking at limits. So let's say, previous limit in the current charter is 750,000. Some of us had wanted to make it a million. Some of us wanted to keep it the same. So those are some of the type of votes. It's not, everything was grand, grandos and changing. It was little votes that made up the whole.
Right.
Dean?
On the issue of non-resident taxpayer voting, you, you said that the commission is waiting for an opinion back from an attorney, or no?
No, we got an opinion, we got an opinion back from the attorney, that, the way I read it is, since we're not a town meeting town...
Okay.
Therefore, non-resident property owners can't, don't have the right to vote.
The reason why I, I bring this up is because I seem to remember, and probably wrong, but I'll bring it out anyway, that there's some towns that refer to, in their charters, a quote, "town meeting," when the town meeting is really nothing more than the voters showing up, to vote in a referendum. They deem that a town meeting.
Well, Stoneington does that. They, the, the first selectman, the budget, he takes the budget, and he calls a town meeting, and they adjourn the town meeting to a referendum.
Right. So if we, if that would be all that would be required, let's say that we were in favor of non-resident taxpayer voting otherwise, but gosh darn it, we don't have a town meeting, could we adopt that device?
You'd have to have some definition of what a town meeting is, some, something in there, what, you know, what is it? You know, you couldn't just use it in a paragraph without having a definition of one somewhere. But, yeah, you could do it.
So you've gotten your legal opinion, I guess, when we get it, we'll, we'll probably ask that question, or have that question. I'm, I'm curious now. So if you don't develop an answer for it, I guess I want to develop an answer, or we should develop an answer for that one, just to exhaust that possibility. If we want a non-resident taxpayer vote, but we need to get around that problem.
We really need the lawyers to, to work, for me, anyway, to get us through this. I mean, we, I don't have the background to, to know everything of that.
Jane, did you want to say something else?
Regarding the, the things we didn't change, we are working, Bob, actually, is working on getting a complete copy of the changes we made. And you can see in there where we didn't make any changes. Discussion was held on just about all of it. But you'll see what wasn't, wasn't changed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dan?
One piece about the non-resident voters, if you decide to have them, you would put that in the definition in your charter. And that would set the basis. You could do that. You define what an elector is. A number of communities do that. And I just would like to say, we did spend an awful lot of time in the first few meetings, talking about some of these big picture things, referendum, Board of Finance. So this was a lengthy process with a lot of debate, a lot of discussion. No votes were taken. There were some straw polls in the beginning, but we worked our way through it. So it wasn't something that just kind of came out and decided to do it.
Richard?
Yeah, from what I just heard, it seems like if the Finance Committee is, is, if they, if the people oppose that and keep the RTM, then that's a town meeting. So therefore, the people that are non-resident voters, or taxpayers, can vote.
I, I don't know if an RTM is a town meeting. That, again, you need a lawyer to tell us that. There's some words in there that they have the powers of it, but...
You know, for 20 years, we've been doing it that way. When all of a sudden, something changes, but we just don't have the common sense to, to go back the way it was and say, look, look, this is the way it should be. We got people paying $30,000, $40,000 taxes, and they can't vote? Because somebody doesn't want to make a decision on whether or not it's a town meeting? And then you're going to play one against the other?
John?
If it's okay, I'll do a copy of that opinion from Betsy, and then I'll get with the attorneys and just find out what the, what the options are.
That'd be great. Thanks, John. Diane?
So if we wanted to add something like that on this, in other words, the non-residents could vote, can we still add to this?
Well, what, what happens, when we give you our draft report, you, you look at it, you, you hold a public hearing, and you come back with your comments.
Gotcha.
Your additions. You would say, please add this non-resident voter rule. The way the statute's read, we can accept your comments or not.
Okay.
Okay. And then we give it back, we give, finally, we give our final report to you, and then you decide what goes on the ballot, one, all, or nothing.
Can I just ask one more question? Did you vote on that before you got the attorney's decision? No, you didn't vote on it, so you don't know whether everybody is in agreement or not, whether they should be able to, or it should be on here?
We took the, we asked for attorney's opinion, and we got it, and that sort of put it to rest.
And it was a dead fish. Okay, thank you.
Well, I think, again, thank you very much. Obviously, a lot of hard work. I think it's very exciting. I think that, you know, the fact that we've moved it forward, there are a number of changes. It's a, you know, it's a big turning point for the town, and look forward to seeing what happens in the public hearing for you guys. And then coming back to us for our final approval and getting it onto a referendum, whether it be in November, which we'll try, or whether it be at a different time.
Maybe one of all of you ought to consider going up to the high school and talking in the civics class. You seem to learn an awful lot about local government. There's always, there's always a cry for that. I did, I've done it before.
You go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have a nice drink now. It's over.
Almost.
So the, next slide is, thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Next slide is 20170181. It is a State Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Grand Authorization. Joe Sastre's coming up for the microphone.
This is just changing names, right?
It's a quick thing, right?
It's a quick thing. Should be quick and easy. The town is eligible to receive state and federal funds through the state of Connecticut. A condition of the eligibility to do that requires a resolution from you folks, authorizing our new town manager to sign paperwork and... our new town manager to sign paperwork and, and all that other stuff, so that's what this is all about. The last time we did this was in two thousand and six, at that time, we were, you passed the resolution using the same language that suggested, or required, I should say, by the state of Connecticut, and that resolution stood, stayed in effect until, well, until we had a new town manager, so now we have a new town manager, we need somebody who can sign the paperwork, and that's where we are.
Gary?
I would like to move it as, as is stated here, it's just changing.
Second.
That's all I need. Motion in a second, any discussion?
Did he finish?
I'm finished.
Okay.
Do you have it done?
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes eight to zero to zero.
I told you it was quick and easy. Good night, thank you.
Next up is twenty seventeen zero one eight two, road maintenance and rehab program, modification of roads per calendar year twenty seventeen, hi Gary.
Hi, uh, this should be real quick, too, and January, the council, our department came before the council and had a list of roads that we're going to resurface this year, two thousand and seventeen. Since that time, we've been working with Eversource, who's installing gas mains throughout sections of the town, we've been working with Aquarian, who still owns the water mains in Mystic area town, and also the state of Connecticut on securing another grant for some work in the Mystic area. So, what the department is requesting from the town council is to move some of the roads that were listed in the two thousand and eight, calendar year eighteen list, to the two thousand and seventeen, putting those roads off where there's going to be water main replacement and gas main installation for two thousand and eighteen, they'll give about a year, or six months, a year, for the contractors to get in there, do the work, the utilities to do the work, the trenches to settle, and then we go in there, what we don't want to do is resurface a road and have it tore up again. Uh, so what we are asking to do is to move a section of the roads, which was from Capston, Irving, Islandview, Windwood, Laps Drake, Old Everts Lane, and Walter Fish, to two thousand and calendar year two thousand and eighteen, and instead, to Briar Hill Road, we did a section of that in two thousand and sixteen, but this will be a section of the, section of the road, they'll be from Gunjuwan Road north to the area we just completed, this will go by Charles Barnum School, but we'll have it done before school is opening, and also a portion of High Street where the, ever, excuse me, where the Aquarian Water Company has already replaced their water mains.
Bonnie?
I have a question. This is so exciting that this gas line expansion's getting closer and closer to downtown, is it going to come all the way?
The, uh, if, uh.
Am I going to get gas on Pearl Street?
Not quite there. Uh, the, uh, it's part of the package, um, attachment A, and the colors are kind of blended together, but everything on attachment A and orange is where they want to expand, it's all going to be south of Route One, south of Route One, east of Fish Town Road, and roughly west of West Mystic Avenue, but it'll be in that lower section, but it's getting it closer to downtown Mystic area, this is the next section of, of area that they like to move into, they have completed, they've almost completed all the punch list items in the Brookside Village area, Ring Drive, and also the Mystic Way and the Bell Air subdivisions, that work is almost done.
Thank you, does somebody, Diane?
Um, I too think it's a great thing that these neighborhoods are finally getting gas, my concern is, are they going to fix the roads when they're done?
We are working with them on, in the areas that they have been, their contractor has been, Eversource has been good, their contractor is a little hesitant on doing some of the stuff, so we're still holding our feet to the fire in those areas they have, the reason we want to postpone our roads is to, what happened in phase one and phase two, we resurfaced the road a year ago, and now they're tearing it up again, so that's why we want to push up, but those other areas, we have not released their feet from the fire.
Okay, in other words, Route One, up at the top of?
Uh, Route One, they will be coming back and milling it, uh, probably the half of a lane, that state DOT is responsible for, and they're holding their feet to the fire, I know it's been marked out with call before you dig, so they're going to be going in there grinding, taking, milling out for about two inches, I do believe, probably sixty-eight feet wide and patching that.
So, they should be leaving the roads when they are done, in at least the.
Where they found.
The way they found.
Absolutely, absolutely, the, probably a good example is they had installed the previous year, the gas main up Fort Hill Road from the Ring Drive up to get it to Fitch High School, that road was, was, was impacted, and they came back, they milled it, and they resurfaced it, so the other section will be like that.
All right.
But the state is responsible for that, that portion of the project.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Uh, yes, um, I was thinking about like the Bell Air subdivision, Mystic Way, where they put the lines in, and now they're, it's all patched, but that won't get re, those roads won't get repaid by the town?
Uh, no, the Mystic Way subdivision, which is mostly has propane that heat those homes, there's a new subdivision up there, throughout the next two years, they'll be installing what they call the laterals, they'll come off the main and install the lines to the house, so they will be slicing up the road even more, after two years, they'll come back and resurface a large area, and the Bell Air subdivision, what she's, most of the areas that you see that have been patched, that's the, that's, that's the utility patch. It's unfortunate, it's stable, they have to guarantee the roads, if something goes, Eversource doesn't walk away, their contractor may, but Eversource doesn't walk away, we'll be on Eversource's, we, we know the telephone number.
Okay, thank you.
Dean, and then Rich.
People, I've had people complain about High Street for years, when are you going to pave it, when are you going to pave it, it doesn't pave all of it, but at least paves a pretty bad portion of it.
Right, and, and, and unfortunately, the worst part of it is where the Aquarian wants to replace the water main, so we'll do half of it, we're working with Aquarian for the last two or three years, they wanted to replace that, there's two mains in the road, a high and a low pressure main, they want to fix that, so it's still on the table for them to do, but it's the worst section of roads where the water mains.
Yeah.
Yeah, Gary, I have a couple of questions for you, how much money is left from the, from the project, from the roads project?
Uh, I will have to get you, I'll have to go through those numbers, we had them in January, when we came back to the council, so I'll have to get with the, the finance director and provide, I don't have that as a part of the package.
So that you, they do these roads in red, right?
We, there's, all, all we're doing is switching roads around, so they, all of the roads will be done, so there's, there's funds available to do everything we had on the list, we're just shifting the.
And the roads that are in conflict with the other utilities, whether it's Eversource or the, the Water Company or whatever, are they going to, are you going to, they're going to put their pipes in, then you're going to pave the road over it?
They're going to put their, they're going to put their pipes in, they'll compact the trench, they'll put a temporary asphalt patch on top of it, two inches of asphalt, temporary for the winter, if, if Eversource, they're putting out the bid, the process will be, they'll install them this fall, they'll have all the construction done, as, if it goes as planned, by January of two thousand and eighteen, so they'll have to put the, compact the trench, put a temporary surface on it, which will be asphalt, then in spring, when they come, we'll just grind everything up.
And they'll credit you for something, right?
No.
Because they're not fixing the road permanently?
Part of it, it was working out when Mark Offinger was here, we were working with Eversource, the more money that they put into patching the road, a permanent patch on the road, less feet of pipe they can put in, because they have a, everyone has a limited budget, having them permanently patch it or temporarily patch it, if they permanently patch it, I'm grinding it up in the next six months, so it's just really wasted money, it'll be stable, it'll be plowable, it'll be drivable.
So, they're not going to give you any credit?
No.
No money will be transferred from those utilities to you?
No, not, no, not at all.
Okay.
Deb?
Sorry, I, I was reading, I want to make sure I was asking a question that wasn't already answered.
Okay.
So, just, just to be clear, this is the entire list for two thousand and seventeen, and you're, this front page, and you're asking us to move this top section to two thousand and eighteen?
Correct.
That's it? That's it.
That's it, and to take some from eighteen to seventeen?
And move it up, okay. I'll make a motion to move alternative one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion?
Second.
The program got stretched to a sixth year, is that right?
Uh, really, uh, the authorization for, for five years, the, the bond referendum, or the bond authorization is for five additional years.
Twenty-two.
We may have money, we may have money for the sixth and seventh year.
Okay.
And if the prices come in right, so there may be a little leftover for the eighteenth year, but it's the list of roads that were, were approved by the town council.
Right, so the, the list of roads, although it's for the two thousand and eighteen, that, is that year six?
That would be year six.
And has that money been bonded for? It hasn't, right?
I'll have to ask the finance director, I believe not, that's coming from Public Works Director that spends the money and not has to, we account for it, but I do believe Cindy has not bonded for that yet.
So, do we have to, will we be putting out another bonding program?
I, I will have to ask her, I do not know.
Okay, and my final question, I guess, do, I understand that we, let's say the money, the money was five million that we bonded for, whatever the number was for roads.
Ten.
And it was a five-year program, it's ten million.
Ten.
And I'm making it up, we, we've used eight million, okay? Theoretically, couldn't we stop, not bond anymore, not, you know, not take the two million that was left over, just sit on our five year and vote in another five year? Or, like, what gives us the okay to go past the five years, it's, apparently, it's the money?
Well, it's the money, but there was an authorization from the town council through, the town council and the RTM, and approved the extension, and those are my words, of, of the bond.
Okay, I want to make sure, I wasn't sure if we, if we're just looking at carrying the, the additional money over, and not talking about the bonding, because we're, we're just talking about the pool of money?
Well, I'll get it from the finance director, when, when she has bonded or will be bonding for these projects, and in second, I, I can get the, the background of when the council and the RTM had approved the language that extended the bond for the five years, and those are, I'm paraphrasing what, what was done, but I'd rather get the right words, too, so I'll, I'll give it to the town manager.
Yeah, at, at the same time, I'd like the town manager to find out how much of that bond money is going to be allocated to the city, as well as Groton Long Point.
Uh, we, we already have those, yes, we have those numbers, those are separate pots of, pockets of money, and I can, I'll, I'll give it to John, or Cindy.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, anyone, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes eight to zero to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Karen.
Any other business? Karen?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of referrals, could you?
Okay.
My first referral is to, in conjunction with what we're doing at looking at police departments and how to consolidate services, my first referral is for the elimination of funding in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget for the Groton Long Point Police Department. When we did our budget, the budget that's currently going into effect, we talked about eliminating the funding for the Groton Long Point Police Department by bringing, merging that department in with the towns, and I believe Councilor Morasik said he wasn't comfortable in acting on that, because it was sudden, and he didn't want to spring it on them, and he didn't believe that was fair, and I appreciate that point of view, so what I'd like to do is make this a referral, so we can start looking at what it's going to take to merge Groton Long Point Police Department into the towns, and save some money in the next budget that we work on. My second referral is to eliminate funding for streetlights in the next fiscal year-ending two thousand and nineteen budget for the City of Groton and Groton Long Point, unless Groton Utilities converts them to LED lights. We converted the town, and what I'm hearing is that there's been absolutely no interest or effort made on the part of Groton Utilities to convert the city or Groton Long Point. I suspect that that may be because that would cost them money, if they, streetlights become more efficient, but anyway, I think they need to get on board, and if they choose not to, then I think they need to pay for their own streetlights. And my third and final request is for a standing referral, which would be to conduct a review annually by a specified date to determine which town of Groton retirees are eligible for COLA increases, and decide the percentage of increase, if any, to be awarded. I would note that the City of Groton approves automatic COLA increases every year to all retirees in the city, equal to whatever the social security increase is, and in the case of the Public Works and Police Department budgets, we're paying for that. We've made a commitment to our retirees that when they retire, and this is for any of the unions, that you are not eligible for a raise or a COLA increase until you've been retired for five years, and then the language that they retire under says that beginning in the sixth year, you will be, the council will look at it and determine whether or not a COLA is granted in, in a range of percentage points. That's fallen through the cracks, nobody's looking at that, nobody's keeping track of who or when retirees get a raise, they're told that they will, that they can look forward to and expect it at some point down the road, and it's not being done, and I don't think that's fair to the retirees, particularly when the City of Groton is giving it to their retirees every single year, so that's my referrals.
Good. Thank you. Carrie?
Yeah, the, the, the streetlights, that, that was supposed to come to us, I've asked a couple of times, when, when Mark was sitting over here in the city, we spend about a hundred and fifty grand a year on streetlights to the City of Groton, we're responsible to light the streets in the City of Groton, and as I recall, when we did it through Eversource, the payback was three, four years, or something like that, and the savings we would get from electricity, however, in the case of Groton, in the City of Groton, there really isn't an incentive there, because they're getting the revenue through their utilities, you know, for, for the same lights there.
Exactly.
We're the ones that would, would, would receive the, you know, the, the decrease in paying, because it's thirty or forty thousand dollars or something like that, we would only have to.
It's a lot of money.
Give them a hundred and ten grand to light the city, because that's what it costs, because they have more efficient, state-of-the-art lights, so maybe not, not paying at all, but maybe paying the rate that it would be if they were LED lights, might be the sensible way to approach it, so we can have that discussion as well.
Thank you. I'd like to put a referral in, or remind you about the referral I requested a number of months ago, or weeks ago, about the Groton sale, I'd like to have those people who are responsible for the sale, come in front of us and tell us where they spent the four, the twenty thousand dollars that we allocated to them, and let us know what's going on.
Well, I can, I'm, we certainly can do that, I will talk to Bill Vogel, and see if we can get him in.
Yeah.
I think that the way, the direction that they're going in is a good direction, and I'll bring drawings in and show you which, which way they're going. So, I will, we can certainly do, I think, Rich, they were going to be asking if you wanted to be on the board as well, or if they were talking about that, so.
You know, where, where, I think it was left was, we hadn't picked the site yet.
Well, the, the USS Groton Sale picked a site, uh, whatever it was, fifteen, eighteen months ago, and had been working towards securing the property and moving forward with the sale, so that's, you know, that's where they decided to go with, and they did it for a number of different reasons, and that's where they're, that's where it's, you know, unless, from an engineering standpoint, something fails on it, that's where it's going to go, is down by the, by the.
How much money has been raised to date?
Uh, I don't want to give you the wrong number, so I'll have to find out.
That's why I want to bring it in.
But the major fundraising hasn't taken place, they just, we've just gotten together drawings for a brochure, and they have sites for what it will look like when it's completed, it looks really great.
I saw those drawings, yeah.
Yeah, well, they're new, have you seen them recently? Okay, so, yeah, so that's where it's at, but I certainly will talk to Bill Vogel and see if we can get, get somebody in to talk to the council. Bonnie, do you want to say something?
Just, I don't think that it was fifteen months ago, because when I did that, the art show with the Subcentry, and Mayor Gelbreth said it hadn't been decided yet, that was last August.
Yeah, I, I can't answer for what, I mean, my timeframe may be a little bit off, Bonnie, so forgive me. I mean, my timeframe may be a little bit off, Bonnie, so forgive me. But, you know, that's where they're moving forward with going, and that's where they're planning on putting it. So they just got the cost for it. Diane?
I'd just like to ask the town manager, have you talked to the chief regarding the dispatch?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we have another meeting coming up tomorrow. I've had a couple of times already, so far on it.
Okay, so is he going to be coming in soon to talk to us?
I'm sure he will be. We're going to meet with the vendor for one thing, talk about communications tomorrow. We're going to look into that NextGen for the CAD RMS software and pursue that. So I kind of want to, I want to learn myself, you know, help work to get a plan together with Joe and with LJ, and we'll definitely be coming forward with recommendations, or just updates along the way.
Okay, thank you.
Barry?
I want to piggyback on what Rich said, because I was on the site selection committee with him, and where it's going, I'm sure it's going to be fine, and I'm sure, but at some point, I think, we recommended different sites for it. Where it's going to go, I don't think was one of our recommended sites. It got kind of chosen, and somewhere along the line, I think I was on the executive committee, too. I don't get any correspondence at all, and I haven't for a long, long time.
Yeah.
So I'm really interested to see, and probably be excited when I see it, but I don't know what's going on, because I haven't been in the loop, so I kind of secondly, I really would like to see some sort of presentation to the council.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned, thanks.